I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take a moment before we do the roll call to just remind us all after just doing this pledge of allegiance, how special it is to live in this country and to be in a democracy. And we're watching on TV people struggling over in Ukraine, you know, with their lives to do that exact thing. I mean, we are so lucky in this country not to ever have to be experiencing bombs in our houses and having to shelter in basements or anything. But they also know exactly what it's like not to have it because it was just 30 years ago. In fact, I think it was about, it was in 2014 where it was threatened again. But 30 years ago or so is when they finally got the democracy that they wanted. So they know what it's like not to live in it. So we just need to be thankful, be aware, send our thoughts and prayers to all those people struggling over there and appreciate and protect what we have here. All right, I'm done. I won't say preaching. All right, Secretary Tenor Roll Call, Mick.
All present via Zoom.
Board correspondent report.
Okay, since I missed the last one, I just wanted to give you a little update on the board resolutions. Everything passed. Ours passed with an amendment to it to include school nurses.
Oh.
And what surprised me, I guess, was every district in the state of Wisconsin has the same issue. Because, you know, basically it's an accounting issue. And it wasn't a unanimous vote.
Oh, really?
Really. So, you know, but everybody interprets things. One word can make a difference in how somebody interprets something. And, I mean, that was probably the biggest discussion we had on one of these amendments. It was just one word. It was just.
I think it's on the third page.
Yeah, will and may, those two words. That was the big discussion. Should it be will or should it be may? And it ended up not changing it, but it was a huge discussion. Anyway, they all passed. Ours passed, and we'll see where that goes.
Excellent.
On the state side, remember when we were talking about the ESTR3 funds? And the state of Wisconsin, the Joint Finance Committee, wanted to take some of that money and basically reward school districts that stayed open? And the federal government said, no, 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 can't do that. So then, state Wisconsin, we had to go back to the, basically to the drawing board and change some things so we could get approval for those funds to be released, and they have done that. I'm not quite sure what they did. I'm sure there'll be more on that coming up. So that, so basically, the ESTR3 funds have all been released to the state. Lots of things going on in Madison, lots of things going on in Madison. There's a couple of bills that were been approved by both houses, so they're going to be headed to the governor. Two of them have to do with charter schools and the tribal colleges and funding. One was a grant to support the teaching of college courses in high schools. So I'm assuming that those are going to be signed by the governor, but, you know, we don't know. There's a bunch of them were passed by the Assembly, and all they're sent to the state, the Senate. Raise illegal age for sale of tobacco and vaping products, all that kind of thing. There's a bill to address the sudden cardiac arrest during athletic activities. I guess if you've listened to the news that's been happening. There's a reading readiness bill on the docket, the gifted and talented program. There's just all kinds of things regarding charter schools. There was one here on income, choice income limits. They want to limit, eliminate income limits for parental choice programs and eliminate pupil participation limits for the statewide program. Let's see. Now, this gets a little intriguing. There's a bill to eliminate the authority of the school board of a school district to approve or deny an owner-initiated petition to detach territory from the school district and attach the territory to an adjoining school district. Right? Okay. Under this bill, under this bill, only the school board of the adjoining district has the authority to approve or deny the proposed reorganization. And we think we had that a couple of years ago. But then, I think, both school districts had to agree to it. Well, this kind of eliminating set would just be, say if somebody wanted to join Luxembourg, Luxembourg would have the authority to say, yes, you can come or no, we're not going to annex you.
That could just get.
Sounds a lot like local control.
Is it only, I mean, is it one person? I mean, could one person do this?
Absolutely.
Your property, it could be a business.
And then they would, and then they would just annex your 20 acres?
The property has to comprise of less than 7% of the district's property value. You know, there's always.
So every property.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm thinking, okay, so now what if, what if you've got, I can understand maybe on the outer edges, but what if there's somebody in, like, in the middle?
My guess would be that that certainly will not fly.
No, 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 these are not going to pass.
By suburban school districts to say, well, absolutely, please come to our school district. While the urban districts will then get chipped away at, and then people will say, well, why are they failing? Why, you know, so it's just an attempt.
There's a, there's a bill out there for a face-covering opt-out. There's just so many, I, there's so many bills out here I can't imagine. I've never seen it quite like this before. There's another one, we talked about this before on the referendums. If you're going for a referendum, you have to put the question on the ballot, but they also, you also have to estimate the amount of interest that that is going to cost you. And if the, it's an easy calculation if it's a fixed rate, but if it's a variable rate, that's basically an accounting nightmare.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, because of the timing of when you have to have paperwork in and when the actual election is. So I think, didn't Wisconsin Association for School Boards suggest that it be posted on your, like, website with updates regularly or something to be transparent, but not to have it different?
There was another one, too, about breaking up the Milwaukee County Public Schools into eight different districts.
Case in point, you earlier, one that you just talked about.
Yes. Now, let's see. Oh, and there's another, you know, this is, some of these are, allows the possession of a firearm in a vehicle on school grounds by a person with a license to carry a concealed weapon. And what they're going at is, okay, mom and dad's, couldn't be mom and dad, have a license to conceal, and they drive into the school district, you know, partly to pick up their child from school. If it's concealed, how would we know anyway? Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, to me, sounds very hard to.
Police.
Yes, enforce or monitor or whatever, and can cause all sorts of misunderstandings.
It was, right in my days when I was working at the bank and the big sign on the door said, no concealed weapons allowed in the building. Well, if it's concealed, how would we know?
Don't want to find out.
No, you don't want to find out. There's a bill regarding the gifted and talented program. But most of these bills are probably not going to get to the governor's desk. And if they did, he's most likely going to veto them. There was one bill, and I want to spend a little bit more time on that one. Bill nine, Assembly Bill 963 parental rights.
Oh, yeah.
And there's like, and I want to read these off because some of these, what's in here, parents already have those rights. They already have the rights. The right to determine the religion of the child. I think every parent does that. I don't think the school districts do that. The right to determine the type of school or educational setting the child attends. We have school choice, home, parochial, private. The right to determine medical care for the child unless it's otherwise specified by law. The right to review all medical records unless, you know, there's, yep. The right to review instructional materials outlined by the child's school. We can do that now. The right to access any education-related information regarding the child. You can do that now. The right to advance notice of any polls or surveys instituted by the child's classroom. Interesting one. The right to request notice of when certain subjects will be taught or discussed in the child's classroom. Certain subjects. Which would be, you know, they're not, yep. The right to opt out of a class or instructional materials for reasons based on either religion or personal conviction. They can do that now. You can do that now. The right to visit the child at school during school hours, consistent with the school board policy. They can do that now. The right to engage with locally elected school board members of the school district in which the child is a student, including participating at regular scheduled school board meetings. We do that now. And anybody has a right to talk to any of us outside this setting. The right to be notified of this creation or updated to a security or surveillance system at the child's school. I'm not quite so sure we do that. I mean, if you know, we would send.
We have cameras.
Yeah, we have cameras, but, I mean, if we change anything, do we notify parents?
So I would ask the question, what, you know, what is a change? So we have them for a long time, so if you update software, do we have to notify families that we now have new software behind our security cameras? If we have to replace one because one's broke, you know, it's the rabbit hole.
I think that most parents just want to know that we have some kind of a security system in place. The right to be informed of any disciplinary action taken against or threatened against a child. The right to be timely informed of any acts of violence or crimes occurring on grounds at child's school. I think we, everybody does that now. And the bill allows the parent or guardian to hire, to, you know, bring suit against the school district if they violate any of these things. And yes, it sounds like quite a bit of overreach. But you got to ask yourself, for me, the question was, what's triggering this kind of legislation? We've never had this type before. And it's, you know, if you look at what's going around all over the country, it's frustration, parents' frustration with school boards, school boards' frustration with COVID guidelines and what were mandated. It's all become so political. And this is what we end up with. So.
Yeah, and all the, any lawsuits against the district just is going to be paid out at taxpayer.
Well, I don't think that this has, this is, I'm sure this is going to be one of those. If it gets to the governors, it's going to be vetoed. This, yeah, it's frustration, it's parents feeling that they're not being listened to. And then, like I said, the board's frustration with COVID and trying to keep the schools open and trying to keep the kids safe and.
It's just too bad that our legislature couldn't have that discussion and say, you know, these are rights that exist already.
They do. They do. Yep, most of these, yes. And, you know, I think probably, when, not so much for our district, but for a lot of the bigger districts around the country, once they went on Zoom and parents are watching what their kids are being taught, they didn't like it. So that's what's fueling this. It's, that's what's triggering this.
Let's see, communication, that's what's important with everybody, open communication. Questions for Pat?
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, and I think they're almost done with their session down there. I think they aren't going to be looking at much more. I think they're pretty much done with their work down there, so.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, they're up for probably another vacation maybe.
Yeah, I think they are. So we'll see. Board CISA report, Mick.
Yeah, I attended the meeting via Zoom from down in Florida, so I had a chance to partake in that. The loan forgiveness program enrollment in that again is coming up. It's a really great program for anybody that's in the public sector, really. But I know my daughter's involved in that, and she is reaping the benefits. So if anybody's got any questions, any of the newer teachers or anybody got any questions about it, you can call CISA seven. I mean, you could talk to Lynn's. I'm sure she'd be happy to answer some questions on how she's perceived the program and how it's worked for her. The other thing I want to talk about is the Northeast Wisconsin Youth Apprenticeship and Internship Program. I think you all know we've had an internship and apprenticeship program here for a while. Nick had started it a while ago. Luxembourg started theirs about three years ago. And CISA's now is taking over that, CISA seven. And they've changed the name to the Northeast Wisconsin Youth Apprenticeship and Internship, taking ACP to a new height. I think it will just enhance what we already have. It's, they're, we're willing to provide fully. I mean, we've hired about 17, anticipate hiring 17 people to run this program. Right now, every door in Kiwanee County school is involved except us. And I think we really need to get involved in that. It's going to be, they want to open it up to the whole CISA seven region. They will provide support. They will help kids spread with their career path, getting internship programs, seeing, you know, what their likes are, what their dislikes are. They get the funding. I think there's over 600 businesses on board with this. They'll help you pick out colleges. It's just a really, I think it could be a really good benefit for our kids. So I would like to see us get involved in something like this. And like I said, I think it's just going to enhance what we already have. I know CISA hasn't been, what's the best word I can look for? We haven't had, we haven't, they've kind of let us down in the past, let's put it that way. You know, you pay for services you don't get. And I had approached the outgoing CISA seven administrator about that, and he couldn't really come up with any answers for me. But there, we do have a new superintendent or administrator coming in there, too. So I'm hoping things will, and that was one of my questions to her, how do you get districts back like ours who have dropped off because you guys have dropped them all? So I'm hoping that, you know, we can get involved in this program. I think it does take board approval. It has to be, we have to have a contract in by April 1st.
What is the cost of it?
There is no cost to us.
Okay.
There is no cost to us. If we have 20 kids involved, we get, we'll have somebody here one day a week. If you have 80 kids involved, and I think they're here five days a week. You know, I don't know, you know, it's, I think it's worth giving it a shot, too, because I think, you know, maybe some of our kids could benefit this. Like I said, there's no cost to us.
Sounds worth looking at.
Yeah, I got a couple of things if you guys want to take it home and take a look at it. But if, you know, if we need somebody from CISA here to come and give their spiel, they will. But I just can't see why we wouldn't want to see where it goes. You know, maybe our kids aren't going to, maybe our kids are just going to stay local. I don't know. You know, but this is, it's just so much more, so much more. They do the funding, they look for the businesses, they, they do it all. If they, if they sing what they're going to do, what they're going to do. You know, we've had that issue in the past, but, like I said, it's a new, new administrator coming in, and we'll see what happens. So I don't know if we're going to get involved, like, you know, I'll have to have someone send a contract or, and it does have to be board approval, so it'd have to be on the board, on the agenda next month.
Well, I think, you want to comment on that?
I would love to comment on that. The one thing that you left out is that they also consume Greater Green Bay Chamber, and that's who we were working with. So the reason that we worked through them is because they provided us the internships that we couldn't get to locally. As you know full well, that I like to take care of our own and do things in-house and locally. And it pains me to see some of the people involved in that taking credit for a lot of those things. But on a default matter, we were already working with the Chamber, so I don't think you're really left with any option other than to be a part of it because they are no longer an option, a viable alternative to this new consortium. So this new thing was created, obviously, because they got a bunch of grant dollars from the state. Okay? Seen this for multiple years. I've seen it in multiple counties. I've seen multiple counties pull out of it and get their own program. So I would just proceed with caution and make sure that you hold them to.
Well, that's a thing.
On actually doing things for kids in Algoma because I find that to be hard to believe.
Businesses and manufacturers, I mean, we, that's one of the things we've always wanted to try and do is keep kids here if we have the opportunities for them here.
And they know we go through Greater Green Bay. They know about our program.
They should. They need it after ours.
Yes, pretty much.
Well, isn't that the case with a lot of things?
Yes, happens a lot. Yes, and we just have to feel good about the fact that it's helping more students in wider areas, even if the credit doesn't come back to what maybe we started in the first place.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But I think, you know, especially if they've taken.
Hold of the council is all I say.
Well, that's, and I had a long discussion with them today again about that.
And hey, it might turn out to be something really good.
I would assume the contract is only, is a yearly contract?
I believe so.
Okay. So things don't pan out.
We'll have to look into it.
Well, I don't know where that leaves us because, like Nick said, they've kind of absorbed the Greater Green Bay.
So I think we're going to probably need to try for that.
Yeah, we're going to have to, yeah, if we're not getting what I.
Agenda for our next meeting and discuss it further. Anything else for Mick? Okay, thank you. Student representative report.
Okay, so girls' basketball had their second regional game. We won against the Manoa, which we had to travel to Manoa. And then we sadly lost against St. Mary's Central. And then boys' basketball has their first regional game against Chiakton tomorrow, which is at 7:00. And then spring sports meeting is tonight at 6:30. Tracking field will start March 7th. Baseball for pitchers and catchers will start March 11th. And then the rest of the team will start March 8th, or 18th, sorry. And then softball will start March 14th. Mr. Nelson is starting to do the academic letters and start handing it out within the next couple of weeks. Ms. Parilaro, Mr. Robertson, and Mr. Cruz had a combined unit where students had to create presentations on which energy is best to be used. And I think Mrs. Horn will talk a little bit more about that. And then Big Talk is the Arts Night and then the Youth Gallery. Ms. Lewis said that the exhibitation of students' work will be open on Friday, March 4th, at Bay Shore Outfitters, Ladybug Glass Gallery, and Spill Street Trading and Gallery. 20 Algoma High School students' work will be displayed for the entire month of March, and those will be in that, those three locations. And then on Friday, March 4th, at all the galleries, there will also be a reception from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. where the student artists will be, will be present talking about the work they created. Students have also been given an opportunity to sell their work if they choose to sell it, which, that's pretty cool. And then a lot of students enjoyed the fun Friday that we had this past week. It was a nice break off between the stretch of school that we have in between breaks. And then the choices were the youth club bowling, card games or video games, floor hockey, sledding at Kiwanee, which I think that was pretty popular and a lot of people enjoyed that. And then movie theater, little theater, and then wood cutting. And then there was like two sessions with that, so got a different choice. And then Ms. Dombeck started a Spanish club. The Spanish club meets on Fridays at 7:35 to discuss upcoming business as well as participate in activities. The goal of Spanish club is to embrace and learn about Latinx culture in our community around the world. Last week, Friday, the Spanish club had a guided meditation in Spanish. March 22nd, they'll be participating in the Art Night with the traditional paper flower making craft. They want to eventually host the Movie Night, Book Club, Community Fundraisers, and Baking Days. And then Bowling Club started with Mr. Van Landon. It's on Thursdays. You have to pay $7, so that's pretty fun. And then Musical was a success. It was Fridays, and then two shows on Saturday. And, yep, that's it.
Yikes.
There was a lot this time.
Yeah. Thank you. And I will make a comment on Musical. Went to it, totally enjoyed the performance, and I have to admit, the next day I had the songs going.
Which one did you go to?
The Saturday night, the final performance.
It was probably the best one.
Yeah, it was really fun to be there. Any questions or comments for Julia?
Okay. Misconceptions and rumors. I have a couple of things that have come up that I want to just clarify. There was a question as to whether or not we still are offering art in our schools. And I think from her, from her report, you can tell that we are quite active with art in the schools. And we still have a full-time art teacher at the high school and grade school. So I don't know where that came, but to clear any confusion about that. There was another question about our music program. And I think anybody who is part of Algoma knows that we have a thriving band program and, you know, a choir program that hangs in there. But compared to the band, I think, don't, on band trip weeks, we had to try and figure that out so that we'd still have some people in school. So, but I think some of it was related to participation in some of the traditional contests, the solo ensemble. And so I did, you know, we did look into that to understand that a little better. And there's a lot of things that sort of went into the decision a few years ago not to continue to participate. And a lot of it had to do with not sure enough all the fees that were involved actually gave us a payback. The students that were involved in it, also because, again, we're a small district. So many of them were also in athletics and this and that and the other. And so what was happening is the practicing for the solo ensemble, things were happening during the class time. Well, what happens to the kids that aren't competing? So there were just a lot of things that went into it, and I don't believe that it was determined to be a high priority. That doesn't mean that if there isn't certainly a student, you know, interest in getting back to it. But I think we have so many opportunities for our students to perform. I'm including Bandarama, which is coming up, what, March 15th, I think? And other things, and then, so I, I think that we made decisions like we do so often, that what's right for our district and what are our kids interested in. And that doesn't mean things can't change, that we can't look at things again in the future. But that's as much of an answer as I can give you for that. Finally, I just want to have a little discussion on ratings of our district because I'm a little concerned that people don't really understand the different ratings groups that are out there for districts. I mean, there are so many. And as everybody knows, depending on what one you are looking at, you are going to get different information based on what they decided to be focusing on. So a district can look really good or really bad or whatever. It's like anything that you want to, you know, look at one particular item. So it's very important to know what they're looking at when they're doing a rating. So I'm just saying that as a general thing. One of the concerns that came out was that our standardized test scores are lower than some of our neighbors. And I'm not going to deny that. But I also want to say, we have, and this is the latest from the DPI, 14.6% students with disabilities, 54.9% economically disadvantaged, and 3.9% English learners. So that is going to influence those test scores. And frankly, we're only a few points off of what the. And frankly, we're only a few points off of what the state averages. So it's not like we're wildly different, even with that. And that percentage of students by no means reflects the potential and the successes that those students have and are going to have. But every student brings a different story and different abilities and different challenges. And some kids need a little bit more time to get to the point where they're gonna look good on a standardized test. And we decided a number of years ago that the standardized test, you know, teaching to the test or worrying about what the next district does was not what we wanted to do. We wanted to focus on our kids. We wanted to give them every opportunity to be a success, to reach their highest potential. So, you know, we added the three-year-old program. We added 4K. We have a full-day kindergarten, which stretches to fourteen years, maybe what we can have with a child to make sure that they are gonna reach their highest potential. We added programs to help our most challenged kids and stimulate our most, you know, and grow our most brilliant kids. You know, we have Pathfinder Academy. We have our new charter school, as well as the traditional school. Because some kids, and this isn't just, you know, low performing kids or whatever category people like to put, there are brilliant students in our district that would sit and just in a regular school setting and be bored to tears and watching the clock until they, their class finished and they could go to the next. And we also wanted to give those students an opportunity to be challenged, to get out of that traditional model and to excel. And to actually, for every student, that we can make the educational experience meaningful, you know, not just watching the clock. A few years ago, we had a beta program or a beta class or whatever. That sort of was a mini little trial of maybe having that kind of model. And it was so successful with students just excelling when they could have a little less than traditional format to their education. But that does not mean that every single program we have, our Pathfinder Academy, our traditional levels, and our charter school, every single one of them, to get a graduation diploma, has to meet the state standards. So a lot of people don't understand. They think, oh, you're gonna go off into some crazy different school and, and not meet the standards. No, everybody has to meet the standards. They're just, they get them in different ways, with different approaches, with different settings. And we're super proud of that. And getting back to the whole ratings thing, you know, the World and News Report, News and World Report, rated our high school as the most successful in Kiwanis County in 2021. You know, I mean, so we have a super lot to be proud of. And so it, it concerns me when people, you know, are looking at one little thing and not the whole successes of our, of our district. I mean, we are, we've had people from other countries come to see what we are doing because we have, frankly, one international recognition for the programs we have started here because they have been successful for our students. So we should all be proud of our district. And yes, you know, maybe if somebody just wants to look at those, you know, state standard, standardized tests, which frankly, at best, give you year-old data, let them. We know what we're doing matters for our kids and that they are coming out successful, so.
Well, I think too, Barb, just to add on to that, yes, standardized tests are important.
Right.
But I think here we put more emphasis on student growth. You know, how much have they grown from one year to the next? Because really, a test is not an indication. I mean, you know, some, most times a test is, okay, they're good at memorizing, or, you know, we put, we put more of the emphasis on, on growth.
Or they're good at taking a computer test, or they can read faster so that they can get through it better. Or, or, or it may have nothing to do with whether they really have mastered the content, and I think that's what you're saying. We want to know that they mastered the content, not that they necessarily can show it on a test or prove it to anybody on the test, so. But we do a lot of internal assessment to make sure that they're growing. We're not just ignoring assessments at all. We do a lot of that to make sure that people are on their, the kids are on the right track. So. Thank you, Barb.
Yeah, thank you. Good summary.
Okay. Public participation. Did anybody sign up to speak? All right. The only thing I was gonna say under announcements is how much I enjoyed Cinderella. I already said that. So we'll move on to the administration reports. Superintendent and business manager report, Nick.
So what I'll start off with is, our admin team has been engaged in quite the budget modeling, forecasting, analytics process. We haven't engaged in that in the past because we didn't have the need to. Now we have the need to. And I can tell you that the growth, again, that I see with people when they have a really good understanding of where things are coming from, where things are going, how do we strategize for the future, it's really been a wonderful process. The analytics process will allow us to develop different scenarios moving forward, which I feel very strongly about for the district. I want to make sure that everybody understands kind of what lever to pull and when. Because we do have a lot of really, really great things going on here, contrary to what some people might say. If you look at our finances in particular, they're beyond outstanding. And when we work with Mary, and Katie can attest to this, Mary tells us pretty regularly that she's pretty shocked at all the stuff that this district gets and grants and things that come into this district that we don't have to put in our budget because we have such good things going on. So those are things that I want to make sure continue in providing scenarios for everyone to take a look at. Because as Pat started off, there's a lot of politics going on. And there is talk about special ed reimbursement rates. And when you are a district with, you know, knocking on the door, probably sixty to seventy percent poverty. I know it's reported at fifty-one, fifty-two percent, but the unreported, having done this long enough, I know is, is quite high as well. We are very dependent on what happens in the state, in the state legislature. Because, again, we are more aided by the state than we are aided by the local taxpayer. And if you change your reimbursement rate from fifteen percent in special ed to thirty percent or fifty percent, everyone up here knows how much money is spent in special education. So to get reimbursed for thirty percent versus fifteen percent is a huge deal. So we are watching that closely. We are also watching kind of this talk about the state having all this money, and what are they gonna do with it? Are they gonna give two hundred dollars per pupil? Are they going to give everybody a check for X? Again, that impacts our district a lot because we are, obviously, again, you know, heavily aided from the state. So we are taking this kind of budget modeling, forecasting process pretty seriously because when you look at the next five years, there's a ton of strategy to maintain where you are at and make sure that we follow your school board goal of keeping a stable mill rate. It is probably one of the most important things that we do, probably goes unnoticed by ninety-nine percent of the population. But everybody up here, myself, knows that that mill rate determines a lot of stuff. And Dave probably more than anybody can tell you when you make poor decisions about a mill rate, how many decades it takes you to recover because of the revenue limits that we have now in public education. So I think our board goals are spot on in terms of making sure that our budget and our mill rate stays stable despite kind of all the chaos and turmoil and politics going on with state operations. It will be super important to, to make sure that that remains as stable as it possibly can. And with that, you're probably going to look at having to, you know, reissue that because of how good we have been about paying off the elementary referendum. We are, you know, probably five to ten years ahead of schedule. That's unheard of. And we will probably advance that even more with this year. And next year, you'll have another opportunity to do that. So what people thought was gonna be a twenty-year span, you might be looking at in the very near future some type of major type of project in the district so that you can maintain that mill rate. And that will be, again, I can't overemphasize that enough, and I'll understand that. But that's why I'm trying to give you guys the right scenarios to look at and know which levers to pull on that. The next thing is civil rights data collection completion. People want to talk about mandates and hours and things spent on this. This is something that I have to complete, and it is something that the hours spent inserting zeros for a federally mandated data set is mind-numbing, is what I'll give that report on, but has been completed. Sorry. Open enrollment, open in February, February seventh, I believe. Obviously, one of the things that we have done well with in years past is shifting kind of the narrative in the outgoing kids of open enrollment. Certainly, we have kids that continue to open roll out of the district, but primarily, they go to virtual schools. And then the others are order kids, is what I refer to them.
And they've never been here.
They, they've never been here, or their parents work in other districts. So when I started, we didn't, we didn't have any coming in. So today, we have almost fifty open enrolled kids in the district. And when you times fifty, times roughly ten thousand dollars a year, you can do the math. That's a big difference in how things go. So I think we have a lot to offer here. Are we, we're going through a little bit of a rough patch. And I, I wanted to touch a little bit on, on that, just because it came up in our ad hoc meeting, is that people are talking about things or programs that are seemingly stopped or going away. And the reality is, is that they haven't gone anywhere. They've just paused because last year, this year, and next year's senior classes are three of the smallest classes, last year's greatest being the smallest ever, to go through this district. And what that does, okay, is you don't have kids for the programs. So when you have a graduating class of thirty students, that means, you know, you're fifty-fifty and you have programs that are heavily dependent on student numbers. It's really difficult to run those programs without any kids. Conversely, in 2016, our graduating class was over seventy. So when you think about when we were rocking and rolling and had a lot of really great things program-wise, really, is because we had the students to do that. So we had a rise from 2011, when I started, and we got well over seven hundred, right? And then we had these three classes that Katie knows this too. We saw them when they were in fourth grade and fifth grade and sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. And guess what? They're now juniors and seniors. And those classes have been historically small. So it's not anything that the district has been doing or Nick Kosh are getting rid of things. It's a reality, okay? And I think you have another year of a couple of small classes, and then you're gonna see the whole thing switch again, where your high school is going to be back in the mid-sixties to seventies graduating classes. It fundamentally changes what things can run, what resources you are going to be deploying. So, again, plays into all that strategy, right? And I, you know, I hear the narrative in town too. But the reality is, is I can't run a program without kids. And, you know, I, I don't know anybody that can run a business without employees, right? So I, to me, it's a, you know, kind of this unfair narrative where we get kind of painted sometimes. But then, in a really short amount of time, it's going to rebound to, you know, probably better than your 2016 age, which were not historic highs because, obviously, the community had a much different demographic look twenty years ago, thirty years ago. But it's important stuff to keep in the back of your mind about how you move forward. Because I'm glad that you shared, all the programs that we've started at the early elementary levels is to provide opportunities for our kids, is to help them grow, right? Meanwhile, we're also dealing with some significant demographic realities. And I'm the, I'm not ever gonna say it's any one of those kids' fault. And we have to provide different things for different kids. That's a period reality. And that's why I appreciate the fact that we have multiple pathways for our kids. Because one size doesn't fit all. We've learned that, right? And I think we just keep supporting that as you go down the road. And I think everything will be, you know, looking pretty good, you know, after next year. Because you'll have the enrollment numbers back to where they, to where they were. And that impacts everything.
Right. I mean, that's my concern about this. And it's probably based on some of the history that we've had with some of our neighboring districts. I mean, with, every small district can't do everything. So the idea was, let's be, you know, let's be the tech center. Kiwanis, let's let them be the egg center. You know, let's share opportunities so that each district isn't having to foot the bill to have the best of. And, you know, so we started programs. Then our neighbors to the west decided that they wanted to start their own and instead of supporting our programs, wanted us to contribute to theirs. So it just, it gets confusing and frustrating. And part of our, part of, you know, the whole donations to the tech center, our local manufacturing group, is we wanted to make sure that they got first priority, you know? And that would be my only concern with this. We'd want to make sure that, I mean, because we have equipment sitting at, over at, at Olson Bath. Yeah, I couldn't come up with the name. You know, and he's more than willing to do apprenticeships for us if we have the bodies, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Well, you know, and I, I, I know the history. I know the history with CISA. But, you know, I just think there's opportunity here.
Oh, yeah. We have to take, we have to make sure.
Our choice of the limited.
Because, yeah, because there's a lot of, you know, no question. No, I'm, I'm open to it. But yes, we'll, we'll try it for a year and see. But we'll talk more about it next time, but.
I got a couple of questions you, Nick. How is it going with Baird as our, doing our, our, our books, so to say? Going well?
Extremely.
Okay. And then the open enrollment, have any come in to the non-traditional pathways that we have?
There's been a couple over here for that.
Okay.
Non-traditional solid path. Non-traditional solid path, yes.
Okay, so I need to.
Anything else for Nick? Is that it for you?
I am complete.
All right. Who's doing the?
Katie's on the phone.
Oh, Katie, you're the, you're the big green phone. Can you hear us?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes. Loud and clear.
I'll put the phone a little bit further away from me. All right, I'm going to start out with some February break spots. I feel like the month just kind of flew by. We glitched our eyes and here we are looking at March already. But the first thing I wanted to mention at the break spot is just the two mental health half-days that we have this month. An overwhelmingly positive response from staff. Also response from students, parents, and I even had the spouse of a staff member reach out and say thank you for those days. So I wanted to make sure that got extended to you as well. Definitely a much-needed thing at this time. At the elementary school, this month has been like the month of dress-up days. We've had, we're going on our second solid week of dress-up days. Last week, we celebrated kindness week. World Kindness Day was last week, so we just extended that and had different activities during the day. And dress-up days, dress-up teams to go along with that. This week, we are celebrating Dr. Suss's birthday. So we are celebrating Read Across America Week. Also, it was a theme dress-up day for every single day of the week. But it's been definitely something fun. And again, I think, you know, this time of year, all of those little things really make a difference in, in the moods of our staff and our students. So that has been a positive. Our P T S is going to be kicking off a new fundraiser starting tomorrow, March 1st. It's called the March Into No-Sell Madness Calendar Fundraiser. So it's basically just a different take on fundraising. Each student has been sent home with a calendar to collect pledges, if you will, for each day of the month. Really no during the past, nothing. It's just more so a donation, a generous donation for those who are interested in doing that. But that will run the entire month of March, starting tomorrow. And then the last thing for break spots is we are in the process of scaling our chef salad all the way down to first and second grade. So Lindsay Harmon and Linda Lebat are going to be now working with Jackie Robinson, who will kind of help the first and second grade teachers as well as students get ready for that transition. We're anticipating having to make some adjustments a little bit just given the ages of the students. Likely they will need a little bit more education around that as an option for them for lunch choice. But we are definitely on it and we are looking forward to scaling that to those grade levels. We also this month held three early childhood play groups. So this, these play groups were three different Fridays during the month of February. It was an hour kind class. Parents in the community signed up to bring their children for both days. They were welcome to attend all three days or just one or two, however it worked out with their schedule. We had about five families, five students participate each, each Friday. And then we had them join with our childcare kids who are here on Friday. So all in all, during that time frame, we had about 10 to 12 students. And they had playtime, structured and unstructured, as well as different stations that they worked through with different developmentally appropriate activities for them to work on. The parents had a chance to kind of socialize with each other. We provided them with resources. We also provided coffee and donuts. So overall, it was just a really great, a great thing. And looking ahead to next year, we'd like to continue offering that playgroup opportunity for our youngest students. I shouldn't say youngest students, our youngest children in our community. But we would like to spread it out across the school year just a little bit better. So it's kind of a trial to see if there would be any interest. But we do think that moving forward next year, maybe doing something monthly, where families could come in one time per month under the same setup, but just spreading it out might, might have a positive impact. So that was really exciting. I did want to provide quickly a mid-year review on our A D R program, which is our achievement gap reduction program. Our goals are somewhat similar as they were for last year. They both have a percentage for academic achievements on our different assessments as well as, you know, in this school district, we like to exercise individual progress in roles. So that has been taken into account as well. We completed our mid-year assessments at the end of Jan, well, in January. It took us a little bit because we had so many students out after break. So by the end of January, we were able to collect all of that data. And we are definitely trending in a positive direction. One thing I wanted to point out is that you'll see that some of the assessments are computerized, others are more individual. So we also really want to make sure that we are giving our students the opportunity to show that they know in a variety of ways. Students test better under one or the other circumstances. So we felt that it was important to make sure that we are taking into account both. And then lastly, as the district assessment coordinator, we are busy preparing for the A C T, which is coming up next week on March 8th. So this assessment is given to all of our 11th grade students. New this year, we are going to be, students are going to be taking that, taking that exam online. So they'll be just right on their Chromebooks. It's been a really interesting setup process this year. It's definitely different and it has involved much more steps than anticipated, but we are working through it. I think the positives there is that the students have become quite familiar taking assessments on their devices. And then as far as the A C T goes, there's very strict timing protocols that we do have to follow. So in this case, taking it online allows that to be automated so that the students, there's no, there's no room for error there. The students' tests will be complete whenever the time is up. So a lot of spending there, a lot of staff at the high school who have been helpful in coordinating with us to make that transition to the online testing. Katie Horrigan has definitely been helpful as well, but that is my critique. So that is all I have on my end. Any questions?
The playgroup is age two-year-old, is that up? I mean, is it two years of age for the playgroups?
It's an age range, so it's children ages two to five who are not currently enrolled in school, that live in the district.
Okay. And then as far as your chef salads, how's it going with the third and fourth graders?
It's going really, really well. We're seeing similar, similar outcomes that we did with our fifth and sixth grade students. So it's definitely been a sustained, it's, it's been sustained level of interest for students. There's days where more students take the chef salad than others. For example, pizza days, most students take pizza. It's been, it's been phenomenal.
So are, are a lot of the greens in the chef salad from our own hydroponics area?
Yes, yes. I would say the majority of them are. And actually, our students asked for that lettuce. They, they refer to it as the good lettuce. So they love it, they are absolutely.
Nothing like fresh. Thank you.
Yep, I agree.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, middle school, high school principal report and Pathfinder update. Katie?
Yes, really covered a lot of my stuff. We do have an art center coming up, open to the community. It'll be on Tuesday, March 22nd, from 4:00 to 8:00. So we will have students that are going to be showing off their art. We'll have local artists here as well. There'll be a silent auction. There'll be some student art for sale. But we will also be offering three different classes for the community members to take. So in the tech area, they'll be doing the welded flowers as an option for a class you can take. Clarissa Lewis, our art teacher, will be doing a board and brush class. And then Erin Balone and students will be doing a chocolate, it's like a chocolate dessert making class. And it's really good because I've been practicing and writing anyway. It's really great. But we're really excited to have that. Dave Robertson will be kind of having just a jazz jam. Him and one of the pianists are going to, you know, be providing the music. We have students who will be playing instruments and singing throughout the hallways. So it's just going to be, I think, a really cool night. You have to pre-sign up for some of the classes, so that's all on our district Facebook.
When is this, when is this again?
It is March 22nd from 4:00 to 8:00.
So what night is that?
It's a Tuesday.
At the high school?
Yes.
Sounds like it's taking over a lot of it if there's music in the hallways. So it's going to be in more than one setting?
Yeah, it'll be, I mean, the shop, it'll be up in the art room, it'll be in the Ms. Balone's kitchen. And then, yeah, throughout the hallways, the student art will be set up. We've got one student who's making like dresses out of recycled items. So it's just a whole variety showcasing the talent that our students have.
I'm assuming that'll be on the website for people to sign up?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Should be up there on Monday. Scheduling night, so prior to COVID, I don't even know how many years we did that. We had scheduling night. So instead of students signing up for classes during the day, we have families come in and schedule the students with all the teachers there so they can kind of talk about the classes and class offerings. We brought that back. We had it this past Wednesday. And we have, I would say about 85% to 90% of our students and families show up to get their students scheduled. And they were able to take tours of A V A. So some of the questions that people had about A V A were answered. We just had a really great turnout. It was very beneficial, I think, for a lot of our parents to be there and be able to ask the teachers the questions that they have about maybe what certain classes were about or what students needed to graduate. And the teachers were, or the parents were also able to see where their kids are in their graduation progress because some parents get blindsided maybe when their kids are juniors and seniors. Like, oh my goodness, I didn't realize I had to take four credits of English. You might have two credits left. So great turnout, it was a really good night and a lot of very productive conversations we had.
And again, A V A is the Alcoma Venture Academy, which is our charter school.
Julia touched on our Fun Friday that we planned for last week. So we put in those half-days as mental health days for our teachers, but our students are also really needing those. So we took our half-day last Friday and did, as Julia said, just a lot of different activities. Two of them that she didn't touch on were two of my favorites. So Erin Balone did MasterChef Junior in her class. So for the morning, she had 18 kids in there in the six different kitchens and they had to create a burger, like a specialized burger out of the ingredients that she had available. And they had to create a dessert out of the ingredients she had available. So the kids who won got personalized mugs. And like second, third place had personalized wooden spoons and spatulas. So that was really cool. And then Clarissa did a board and brush for our students. So we had a very wide variety of activities.
Well, who judged the food?
Just some of the teachers in the building. Teal?
I had a burger outside with Mr. Nelson. He was a good cook as well.
And I went sledding and it was a really good time. I'd never been to the Kiwanis before. Got lots of balloons, but it was really fun. And then Julia also touched on the freshman cross-curricular project. But I'll go do that a little bit more. So our English, social studies, and science departments all went together on a big project revolving around energy sources. So in each of the three classes every day, the kids were in groups, working on, each, each group got a city that they had to study. So there are cities in Hawaii, cities in Pennsylvania, and cities in Virginia. And each group was assigned one city. They had to kind of study the population, where it was and what energy source they thought would be the best fit to empower the city. So from the English aspect, they had to write reports, they had to present. The science aspect, they were obviously focusing on different energy systems. And then social studies, they worked on obviously the geographical location and a lot of history of the energy systems. So, and they had to present in front of myself and then their entire grade level. So it was really awesome to be able to be in the audience and just watching the kids be able to speak so eloquently on different energy systems. And then they had to present which one they thought would work the best for the cities and then counterclaims and why different ones wouldn't be great for that city. So it was really cool to just see the whole cross-curricular project. And I know that Brenda Perillo and Mike have been really focusing on do that in the past. So it was awesome to be able to bring in the science aspect of that too.
That sounds great. Special Ed report.
Marie's on the phone.
Marie, you're on the phone too?
Yep, I'm here with Katie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Sounds good. We had last Friday our very own abilities project. It came down to the elementary school commons for a staff-exclusive sale. It was really exciting to see through our former students and it was a really great turnout. And we were able to kind of highlight Connor Robinson's new design. Amy Shaneberger had asked Connor what kindness means to him and he was able to draw that out. And it's now a design on the T-shirt, so that was really exciting to see. Next, we are in the works of planning our annual early childhood screener event. We don't have a concrete date, but we will be deciding on one very soon. The early childhood screener is, it helps our district identify children that may benefit from maybe some district resources or community resources to help with their development. And this screening event would be particularly for children whose birthdays range from September 1st, 2017 through December 31st of 2019. So once we get that finalized, we'll push out the information to parents, families, community members. And then we encourage any children to attend, especially if there are any concerns regarding child development. Lastly, we are in the works of finalizing the details for our D L M assessment. That is the alternative assessment to the Wisconsin Forward Exam. It's a very small percentage of students in our district that take that, but it's determined by their I E T team if that would be appropriate for them to take the alternative assessment based on utilizing the alternative achievement standard as the essential, essential element. So that is taking place March 22nd through May 14th. And that's really all I have on the specialist side. Any questions?
No, thank you, Marie.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on, the Alcoma Monthly Update. Teal, I can see the corner of your face.
Ooh, I'm a little bit. Is, is Whitney Ebert still in the room?
Yep, she is.
I wanted to have Whitney introduce herself as the community is buzzing. And probably I've heard Zach Bolanick is, has a new job, you know? He's getting married soon and is moving out of the area. So we posted for the position of Director of Operations and Community Engagement and we offered the position to Whitney Ebert. So I would love for her to introduce herself and a little bit about why she really wanted to work at the Wellness Center. And then I'll finish up the Aloma Report after that.
Hello, everyone, I'm Whitney Ebert. I'm going to be the new director at the Wellness Center. So I don't know, I'm just excited about the opportunity with my background and passion for health and wellness and just to bring it back to the community. It's all about focusing on like community engagement over the generations. So, yeah, I'm pretty excited about it.
We're glad to have you.
Yes. Yes, welcome.
Whitney, I, I love your goal that you shared at the bottom of your welcome introduction on Facebook. Can you share that? Because I think it just says a lot about who you are. And I was even sharing that with Nick, that, that just the goal that you presented in the next couple of months was just, was great.
Yeah, so my first goal, it's a very like simple goal, but I feel like it takes a lot of, you know, like mental, I don't know. Anyways, my goal is to obviously like learn everyone's name that like enters the center or the school. Yeah, so please quiz me on your names. I'll appreciate it.
And brush up on your pickleball skills.
Like today, he did good.
Called up by some people that may or may not be sitting up here. They're pretty wicked pickleball players, so.
That's always fun too.
That's a great goal.
Thank you, Whitney. I was, um, I just, we had a little, uh, some of our community members threw a farewell party for Zach last Friday. And it was really cool for me to see just this kind of. And um, it was really cool for me to see just this kind of torch handoff. Um, Whitney was able to be there as well, and the community members are already embracing her. Um, she's the perfect person for the position. As we all know, the Wellness Center is more than just our physical activity. It's really a hub of our community. And although Zach can't be replaced, um, I think Whitney is a really great um, person to come in and continue those um, strong relationships that we have. So just really, really happy that she is part of our team.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Teal.
And Whitney, you don't have to say the rest, I know you're very busy, so um, but say something that you can, you can go if you want. Um, for live Algoma, I just have a really quick report out. We, um, in twenty-twenty, we received the All-America City Award. And um, every year, we have an option to continue to be a member of the National Civic League. So the um, administration decided that we wanted to continue that membership. And really what that means is that our city and our school district, we're the first school district to really receive a, um, the All-America City Award. Um, but we do partner with the city on that. And we'll get like a, a ad in their big publication that they do annually. They'll promote us at their annual event. Um, we get community assistance, free community assistance. So if there's assistance in housing, um, transportation, anything based on the vital conditions, they would give us that. Um, our name, our logo, all goes on their website and every national publication and journal that goes out. And then they uh, at, at least once, if not maybe twice or three times, will spotlight Algoma um, by being a member on different work that we're doing. So I know recently, and this, I didn't even know they put this in there, um, but I just saw a winter twenty-twenty-one, their quarter ending uh, journal that went out. And Algoma was mentioned in it about three different times. So I can definitely send that article to all of you to read. Um, it talked about our COVID-nineteen response, specifically about how, uh, because we built our culture with failing forward and collaboration, we were able to respond very quickly to COVID-nineteen. And um, it also spotlighted how we did our own contact tracing. And I know that might not, you know, sound unique um, for us, but it was, it's definitely unique, I think, compared to the rest of the United States and how we responded to COVID so fast. Um, and how we basically took care of our own and led with that and kept our school doors open. And again, that wasn't a unique um, thing in a national forefront. So um, just wanted to let you know that we're still a National Civic League member for this next year in twenty-twenty-two. And um, yeah, that's it, live Algoma.
Thank you, Teal.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Algoma Venture Academy update.
We, I wanted to give a little update on our enrollment numbers. I can't remember if I talked about that in the last meeting or not, but um, at semester, we gained an additional seven students of the seven. Um, there was one student that um, opened and enrolled into our district from another nearby district. And that's um, really, I think, exciting to see that the word has gotten out. I know we have a, another nearby school district that is considering opening up a charter school. So you know, the buzz is out there about these charter schools and what's possible, and how we need to think differently and provide more opportunity for learning pathways. Um, so that's intriguing and exciting for, for us and Venture Academy. To Katie Horn's point, I think scheduling night was really great. Um, we were able to give tours and answer questions. I think there's a lot of rumors and misconceptions out for Venture Academy still. So um, we're working with a marketing company. We have a video that's coming out, just different avenues that we can really um, I guess, answer questions. I, I have lots of questions even at home in my own household. So I mean, that's a good thing. It means that people are inquisitive and asking. Um, what I can say that I, I think the biggest trip up is how do we know that the students are learning the same as their peers in the middle school, high school? And um, Barb had talked about it before. Um, we have Wisconsin State standards. The difference is that in the middle school, high school, the Wisconsin State standards are teacher-led, meaning that the teacher develops, uh, leads with curriculum or lessons that are based on the Wisconsin State standards. And then they'll, you know, whatever lesson that they have for that day is based on the state standard that they are leading with. Um, in Venture Academy, we have the Wisconsin State standards, the same ones per grade level. The only difference is that we're asking the students to lead with that. Meaning if they have a project, what Wisconsin State standards, or what we call them, learning targets, are they attaching to those projects that they're doing? And how can they prove to us that they have, um, that, that they're competent in those? That they have mastered that, or that they're proficient in those learning targets? Um, Katie Horn was talking about cross-curricular um, projects that the middle school, high school is doing. And yeah, our middle school, high school can do the same exact things that Algoma Venture Academy can do. The difference is that Algoma Venture Academy does that all day. So we're cross-curricular, we're project-based learning, and that's really what we promote. Um, and the third thing that's a little bit different is just our community outreach. Middle school, high school students still have the option to, you know, work in our community and do projects and volunteer as the Algoma School District always has led with. The difference is that Venture Academy, I mean, that, that's the, we want our students to be able to have multiple connections outside of the district. And we're not bound by um, seven-period classes. So their whole day is a very flexible schedule. And um, charter schools, the purpose of them is to innovate. You know, we need to have a little bit more autonomy so that we can try things. And when we have something that works, we like to inform the middle school, high schools that they can adapt some of those best practices. So it's really what, what I think the difference is in a nutshell. Um, but I think there are still a lot of questions. And we just invite any parent that has further questions and may be interested in that to have a discussion um, with myself or Abigail Robinson, who is our early educator. Um, a break, what's that?
I said, bless you, Dave.
I need him.
That's a bright spot. I kind of, everything's been so fast with Venture, you know, um, most school districts take a year to plan before they open a charter school. That's not Algoma's way. We knew that we needed to open up another learning pathway, we did it uh, during COVID. And um, so we're still failing forward and, and building and trying things out. Um, but I, we, things are so fast that I forget to mention that Abigail Robinson, who um, graduated with us, is, you know, twenty years old and co-founded a charter school back in her hometown. And um, is now, I think, this summer, yes, will graduate with her admin license. So we need to be really proud of um, just the things that we're doing in the district. And um, to, I thank everybody who spoke tonight. We really rally around individual growth. And um, when we were giving tours just a few weeks ago with our superintendent candidates, um, I think for me, it was really great to see some of our youth come back, and they work in our district now. And one even said, you know, once you see the light, you can't, you can't go back. Um, it's the way that we problem solve. And I think we're really seeing the benefits of how we lead in um, in education. And I'm just really proud to be part of that. Um, the last thing I'll say about ABA is um, one of the measurements, and, and I'll have to show the school board our measurements once we have some secondary data, but we have the same measurements that our middle school, high school students have in A reading, A math, and my papers. Um, and we have an additional assessment that we think is unique. Um, it's unique for the state of Wisconsin in charter pathway, but it's also unique for us in Algoma. So one of the measurements is that by the time they, each year in Venture Academy, we want to see their network grow. And so we call this an interconnectivity map. We asked students in the beginning of this year, um, how many connections they had outside of school in terms of their education, in terms of their growth. And um, we have them also rate those connections on a four-point scale. One is called SPART, meaning that they made that new connection and that they had very limited um, maybe interaction with them. Stable means that they've had multiple interactions with them and are working on a project for them. Um, then there's frequent, that means that they've had multiple interactions with this person outside of school, um, or that they are working on a project with them. And then the last one, which is one that we really want our students to get to with at least one, one other entity, person, organization, is what we call a mutual connection. And that mutual connection is that they have multiple interactions, they're scheduled, and that they're working on a project together that they're building, creating, and improving a part of our community. So it's a really, we want to be able to see that by the time our students graduate, they have multiple um, connections with people outside of the school district, and that they have depth to those connections as well. Because we feel strongly that whether they go to college, go onto the workforce, military, that though, that their broad interactive network is going to help them have more opportunity and access for things that, you know, they're passionate about and skilled in. So I just wanted to um, mention that, because I'm not quite sure that we mentioned that publicly, but that is one measurement that um, the Algoma School Board will be able to look at and see how our youth grow over time and um, the impact that that's having on them and their success.
Sounds great. Yeah, sounds wonderful. Any other questions for Teal? Okay, committee reports. The only committee that um, met this month was the S R three ad hoc committee. Um, we met on the ninth and again on the twenty-first. And I would like to thank um, Barb Gerdman and thank Johnny Parent, um, committee members that came and offered really good input. Um, we had some very excellent um, discussions um, with their perceptions. It's always helpful to have perceptions outside of our own thinking. Um, and we basically completed our work in two meetings. I would, originally thinking it would take three, but we completed our work in two meetings. Um, basically um, came up with um, different, we itemized a whole lot of different things, but they sort of fell into the area of people and positions, programs and products, technology, building improvements. And basically, Nick then got the task of um, putting the general idea into the um, application to DPI, which is required for a, um, initial application approval. Um, to make sure we're on the right track. And then he is going to get a little bit more itemized um, follow-up, I guess, for which the committee members plus, of course, the board, um, and finance committee. Um, because obviously, the whole purpose of this was, let's not lose a year of our funding. Let's make sure we incorporate it into our budget plans for this next year. Um, so yeah, um, I think we did that, and we'll move on. I think we need to have a finance committee meeting in um, March. Dave? Um, so we'll need to come up with some kind of date. It'll be you, me, Dave?
I don't plan on going anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully you're ten, faded a little. Yes, Dave.
I'm, I'm, I'm open during the week, uh, in the afternoons.
Okay.
Like one o'clock.
Okay, we'll figure something out that works then, Nick. Um, okay.
At your place, Dave? Sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's much nicer to be able to talk in person.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll get that scheduled. Um, current COVID statistics.
Zero, 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 zero.
All right, good, 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 good.
That is a number that very often you don't want to see in the school system. But it's what we want today, for sure. Any other items for discussion?
I just wanted to mention that the new website is up. You haven't checked it out. So it launched on the fourteenth of February, and it's really um, much improved. And thank you, Teal, for helping us do that as well, and all the team members involved in that.
Um, have we done updates on it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, because I've been gone, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And, and there's some old information. I mean, it still needs a little bit of work.
Okay, because I know there's some people that are still on that aren't here anymore.
Oh, not bad.
That's all been taken care of.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it's.
Yes, yes, thanks, Jessie.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, you know, still a work in progress, like anything is.
It's always a new work in progress.
But it's much more easier to, it gets easier to use, the defined information.
Right.
And if you, if you do find a mistake or.
Oh, well, just give Jessie a call.
Yeah, 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 we'd appreciate anybody that, that realizes some thing's incorrect on there. You know, we don't want to have incorrect information on there. But I think it also finally demonstrates what our, our district is all about. I mean, we are probably the worst people in the world as far as tooting our own horn. And um, a- and so basically, um, Dave, do you want to?
Yeah, Barb, I don't know if this is part of the website, but last week, there's a, a email went out about social media problems that we were having to the parents, but the school. I know I didn't get any as a school board member.
I didn't either.
Katie, how did you address that one?
No. Yeah, Katie.
Address the issue, or why you guys didn't get it?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I think he's just wondering why he didn't get it, but you can just.
Well, so we have a list that goes up to the whole school that you guys are included on.
Right.
My list just went out from the seventh through twelfth graders. So it wasn't the whole master list, because I.
And then Patty, the whole school, because it wasn't the school, school issue.
Okay. So unless you want to go back to middle school, Dave, you don't have to be included in that one.
Well, I, I, I just feel we should be notified when something like that's going on. The parents knew about it, but we didn't know about it.
Oh, that's what you mean, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you want, I can create more of this that includes everybody, break it up by middle school, high school.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That'd be good.
Sure, yeah, yeah, you have a good point there, that if somebody asks us and we have no idea what's happening, you know, it would be helpful.
I had that happen, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What I'll do is I'll just create a list to include just the, the board members. So if that's a list and you want to include the board members, you can just select it.
Great, thanks, Jessie.
Yeah, that'll be helpful, thank you.
Barb, one thing on the website, just so that for, everybody's on the same page. Under the COVID dashboard, they will see a link to our response over the last two years in relation to COVID. The reason that is there is because in order to get our S R three things planned, we have to prove that we did all of these things. And you can assume correctly what's the number one thing on that S R three plan, okay? So don't be alarmed if you go on the COVID dashboard and you click that link and you see two and a half, you know, two years of documents, okay? So we have to have that on there so that DPI can cross-reference the little dots that I have to click on that says that we are doing X. They have to then cross-reference that with information that be released. So when people are asking about transparency, some people forget that we sent out a weekly communication letter for well over fifteen months. All of them on there, right? All of the things related to mitigation strategies, how masking, you know, recommendations, the fact that we have not had a mandate for masking um, quite some time. Um, so all of that is on there, but that has to be there in order for us to get approval of our S R three plan. So I just want you to put that out there so that somebody doesn't go on there and say, oh, look what they're doing. Make sure you check the date on when that was sent out. Because um, that's the last thing that I want, is somebody thinking that we're doing something that we were in fact doing in spring of twenty-twenty or twenty-one, um, because it was entirely different circumstances, so. But just to be transparent, that is there, and it's a very lengthy document.
Okay.
Can I just say, I wanted to um, thank Rob and Harper for, for doing all the updates. And I think the reason why we're going internal with the updates is because it's really helping us all have one streamlined uh, communication and know what's going on. So it's been, just like everything else we've done this year, um, just to kind of streamline processes, that's been one of them, and it's been really helpful for our district. So if you see anything on the website, um, obviously give us grace as we're going through this transition, transition right now. But if you see an edit, yes, please send it my way, and we'll work together to get that fixed.
Thank you, Teal.
Any other items for discussion? Okay. Okay, I'll move on to action items. I need a motion to include the regular board meeting minutes of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, the special school board meeting minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-two, and the S R three ad hoc committee meeting minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-two, and February twenty-first, twenty.
I so move.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to accept the, approve the presen, excuse me, the bills that were given to us tonight as well as those presented to us in our pack.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Pat, seconded by Jennifer. Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dave, did you?
I did, I.
Okay. Motion carries. Obviously, we don't need to do any modification of COVID mitigation practices because you can't do better than zero. Um, request for future agenda items. I think we'll have this on the agenda.
Yeah, and I'd like to revisit that diesel program in Luxembourg again, that thing's, you know. I've had a few phone calls on that lately.
Okay. And, anything else? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen seventy-five, sub section one C E F and I, for the purpose of raising the matters hires staffing resignations.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Joanne. Dave?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
And?
Yep.
And I also say yes.